People calling me?
Please, here just a sec Greg, let me turn you on.
Turn it on, well I think they heard my voice a lot in the room.
Just as you know, for some reason, the mics are actually running hotter, which is a good thing. So you may, whoops, you may not have.
Joy told us to talk into him, closure.
That's better, isn't it?
They are better, they are better, I think.
We don't know why, but we're not asking.
Halfway through the meeting, they'll stop. Okay, we've called the meeting to order, thank you. Roll call, please.
Snowy.
Here.
Beno.
Here.
Van Campen.
Here.
Smithback.
Here.
Mar.
Here.
Holda.
Here.
And Mozon and Meyer are excused tonight.
Thank you. Move on to public appearance, and the first item is the community input.
Minutes.
Yeah, but there's no minutes.
Got it, sorry.
They are available.
Thank you.
Oh, okay. All right. So, in this part, we have a, this is a part of the agendas which allows the commission to receive information and to ask questions of a presenter to facilitate a better understanding of the information. Commission members may discuss procedural matters relating to the information such as whether the information should be directed to staff or placed on a future commission agenda. This is 15 minutes long, three minutes per individual, please. You can talk about anything you want, whether on or off the agenda. And we'll comment that there are probably some items on this agenda that you folks are here for. This is informational only, so we will not be taking any comments during the actual discussion of the individual items. If you want to talk about it, you can talk about it now. So, Joy has some people that want to speak, go ahead, let us know.
We can start with Michael Dorn.
Okay. Mr. Dorn.
Presentation.
There should be a slideshow.
Yep.
Three minutes long?
Yes.
That's how long it is.
So what I tried to do here is to show the boundaries of this building as proposed, as it would appear traveling south on Janesville Street. And, in my view, it's just totally out of scale with the neighborhood. It's some 50 feet in height, and it's got one and a half story structures on either side. And all the buildings to the south are all RS4 buildings. Next slide, please. I think you went two instead of one, sorry, there you go. So there you see it, just from the street level, I just took the plans view from the street and plunked it there next to the bungalow that's next door. You can see the bungalow would have dozens of cars parked there, several hundred traffic movements in and out of the place, shining in the windows, no buffer yard. It degrades the beneficial use of that adjacent property, for sure. Again, doesn't fit, next slide, please. Now if you go to the comp plan, when it talks about this sort of thing, it mentions the need for a transition between high-rise development and single-family housing. Discusses middle housing. I think everybody that I've talked to, and I've talked to a lot of people in the neighborhood agrees that some improvement on that property is appropriate. But something of the next slide, please, would be far better. This matches the comp plan again, it's from page 82, and it shows a facade rhythm that's more appropriate with the bungalow that's next door. However, it's missing a buffer yard that should be provided, given this change in land use. There should be some significant buffer yard. It would better fit the neighborhood, a building of this type. Next slide, please. So the other concerns are, it's not consistent with the planned goal of maintaining a small-town atmosphere. Downtown traffic and parking already are very difficult, particularly during rush hour. When people want to go to the Firefly on the weekend, there's no place to park, it would make that worse. I don't see any space on the site for stormwater attenuation and storage, which of course is required. There's no park nearby for children that would be residing there. And I think that's jumping the gun on the master plan. Much has been said about the master plan for the downtown. This would sort of set some precedence, I think. It should await, I think, the public's decision on what the downtown should look like. So, just in brief, the project shouldn't be approved without some very major changes that would address these concerns.
Thank you, thank you.
And Shelby Deegan.
Hi, I'm Shelby. My husband and I live in 241 Janesville Street, which in the images on the slides was the house that's directly next to the proposal. So, we came and talked about this proposal previously, and I know modifications have been made, but a lot of our original concerns remain unaddressed. And we continue to be concerned about the impact that this development would have on us as homeowners. And I just wanted to say beforehand is that we're also not opposed to any kind of development on this property. We understand that a lot of improvements can be made to the property, and we're not against any kind of development. Just this proposal, we believe, has too many features that make it unfit for the space. We think that this proposal would have a profoundly negative impact on our neighborhood and certainly on our house, and I listed out some of those reasons. So to start, noise and privacy, so I think the proximity of such a large building directly next to our home, we are really worried about losing our privacy, since the building would be significantly taller than our house and any house in the immediate area. One entire side of our home will have total no privacy at all anymore, given the size of that house or the apartment complex. As well as the parking lot would allow a lot of noise to be introduced into the area, which would make it much more difficult to enjoy our house and enjoy our backyard, for example. A smaller proposal would be less likely to impede on our privacy, as it would match the size of the buildings already in the neighborhood and would fit the size of the lot properly, as we don't think that this proposal fits the size of the lot in any manner at all. As an added note, the trees on the proposal that are drawn on our property are not actually indicative of what's actually there right now. So there's four trees that are drawn next to our house, that makes it look like it'd be more private, when there's really no such tree that's any taller than our house and would provide such privacy. Our second concern is building size. Like I said, the building would be the tallest and largest in the neighborhood, and building such a large building on such little space that leaves virtually no yard space for children to play or for pets, if the apartment ends up being pet-friendly, which we worry then residents would use our private yard for this purpose. Our third concern is parking. There are only enough proposed parking spaces for each of the 45 units of the complex. We're wondering where guests of the apartment would park or customers of the commercial spaces, because there's already very limited street parking for Oregon's downtown. And then finally, after consulting with experienced realtors, it appears that any resale of our home in the future would be further complicated by having a busy parking lot directly next to our house. Because the property is not suitable for underground parking, it means the complex must have 90 above-ground spaces, which again would really increase the noise. So we believe the proposed apartments are simply much too large for the allotted space, even with recent modifications. Those considering redeveloping the properties must propose housing developments that matches the size of the lots and ensures a proper buffer between the development and our house. This includes scaling down the size of the development, the number of units, ensuring more yard space and room for a buffer. Scaling down will alleviate concerns about having the development match the neighborhood and not exacerbate downtown parking and traffic issues. And just the last thing is that, when I was talking about the trees and the images on the proposal versus our actual house, I did include an image of that, which will be in the packet tonight, too. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And Linda Wick.
I live at 309 Jefford, Janesville Street. What I'm more concerned about is the looks of the town. A lot of us have lived there 20 to 50 years or more. And I just think it's going to take away all the hometown feel of it. The parking is a big concern. The public parking downtown, now, you can't get in there. So if people are visiting the apartment buildings, where are they going to park? And most times, two-bedroom apartments will have two cars. So they're going to run out of parking space there also. I do worry about the traffic, because it comes out on Elm Street, Union Street, and then Spring Street. And right now, you see a lot of people having trouble crossing those streets, as it is, especially kids. And I just think it's wrong to put such a large building there. If it's something small that would fit in, and the design, maybe that would be okay. But you're going to take away from all these homeowners that have kept it up for years. It's a nice neighborhood. So that's my concerns, parking, traffic, and the looks of it, and what it'll do for our hometown.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
And Ginger Drayer. Oh, I'm sorry, and Carol.
I do not live on Janesville Street, my name is Carol Cushing, I live on Drummond Drive. Having just gone through the very same thing with the development on CC, I understand these people's positions very clearly. But I just want to kind of go and just remind the community character composition that the significance of the building scale of multi-levels are disrupted to an urban fabric, and that all the buildings should be fit, this comes from the comprehensive plan, that the buildings should fit in with the neighborhood. This building, as large as it is, does not fit in well with that neighborhood at all. I don't want this to become a concrete jungle like Madison, which I drive downtown Madison to the Capitol for my work. I don't want to see all these big, huge, tall apartment buildings, that doesn't fit in with the character of Oregon. The small-town, wonderful quaint character that a lot of people moved here for. This type of building, according to the comprehensive plan, this large-scale belongs more near a highway or definitely in a commercial area, not in a residential area. That building is going to be so huge against those houses on Janesville Street. It's just, that's going to be impossible. It's, it just doesn't fit at all. And I agree with their traffic concerns, because I had the very concerns for the property on CC, and we went over that several times. I know that you all know my face pretty well from that. And there was, there were changes made to that property to where it fits more in with the neighborhood. Not perfect, but livable. And this looks like a warehouse, a big, huge warehouse, is what it looks like from the drawing. So, I don't know if they can do anything about it, but those are my concerns. I just think that the architectural style needs to fit in with the community, and it doesn't.
Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you, we're going to move on then with the rest of the meeting. We'll move on, there's nothing under communications business, there's no unfinished business, new businesses. IM7A for discussion only. Conceptual review and proposed mixed-use building at 211 to 231 Janesville Street, applicant is AY Development. Anybody want to?
All right, and I'll have Steve Schulfer from Sketchworks Architecture kind of start us off. There's a couple images, too, when we're ready, we can toggle those, and then I'll fill in after Steve's done with his presentation. All right, take it away.
Excuse me. Thank you, at least. Steve Schulfer of Sketchworks Architecture. We were here once before at a previous plan-commission meeting, and really I know there's been a lot of comments on this development about the architecture, the look of the building. I've read comments about how it looks like a prison. It, I want to reinforce to everybody that we have not designed the exterior of the building yet. We are here today to get some feedback on the density and the height of the building, and that's our main, primary purpose. Happy to look at the architecture, happy to look at gabled roofs, or different materials, or different window placements, things like that. Simply put, we're not there yet. So I just want to ask everyone to just help me out by just understanding that we've got a long way to go on the exterior design of this building. What we would like to pursue today is just some feedback on the density, the use, the parking, the height. Those are the primary characteristics. We've gotten some staff feedback regarding stormwater management. Clearly, it's a requirement, clearly we have to meet that requirement, and we intend to do so. So, no qualms about that whatsoever. We would just like to present, you know, this development, which has a density of 45 residential units. It's currently got 61 parking stalls. As you've probably read in the report, when we came back, when we were here a couple months ago, we had hoped to get some underground parking incorporated in the project and do a four-stories of residential and commercial. We had to scale back on that density slightly, primarily because we discovered the water table was at about eight-feet below grade. That isn't a surprise to many of you, I know, because that was one of the topics that we discussed at the last meeting. But in response to that, what we had done was scaled back some of the commercial spaces. And then, Jeff, if you want to flip to the floor plans, that might be helpful to show people. And I can point out some of the changes that we have made.
Want to start with the parking?
Yeah, that's, that's, you know, that's perfect, the site plan. And I think on that same page, I've actually got it open here, there's also another drawing with.
Be the next page, sir.
Yep, this one with a overlay on that.
Yeah, that's probably a good place to go to, thank you. So our intentions are to put parking at the, at grade on the first-floor level on, you know, what would be the southeastern portion of that building, just as you see there on the screen. The commercial space then would be focused on the northwestern corner of the site, we're hoping for some outdoor patio space, and to do something nice to integrate with the street, with Janesville Street, bring in some pedestrian traffic, and really integrate that pedestrian flow there. There would be a residential or visitor access point off of Janesville Street, which you can see roughly in the middle of the building. And then, of course, there's the surface parking, which would be outside of the footprint of the building. We, you know, there will be some tenant amenity spaces, we're showing a fitness room. It's, you know, that's not perfectly defined yet, it's a placeholder for right now. There would be mechanical spaces, water heaters, electrical service, things like that, that we would have to locate around the first-floor footprint as well. If you could, please, go to the next.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, there we go, that's another representation of the same thing. In terms of our parking counts, I think we've got 28 stalls inside the building and 33, if I recall. Surface parking outside the perimeter. You know, our intentions are to green up this parking lot as much as we can. I know Shelby, I believe, one of the neighbors, had represented that the trees aren't exactly accurate, and I apologize for that. It's a rendering that we started sticking some trees in, but we can certainly make that more accurate, try to get some greenery and some screening, you know, as necessary. We would have enclosed trash, things like that, that are really mandatory with any development, but all of those particulates would be here. Yeah, go ahead. Again, this is just trying to demonstrate the height of the building and, you know, a relative approximation of density. Again, I, this is not the architecture, this is not the architecture that I would feel comfortable settling with, and I'm sure everybody in this room would probably say the same thing. I just hope that, you know, we can get to a point where we can all agree that the density and the height is acceptable, and then we'll work on materials and roof lines and window placement, things like that. We'll certainly be back before you to make a formal submittal as such. And this is just a representation of what the street, streetscapes would look like. Again, trying to illustrate, you know, what the relative heights of the neighborhood is.
Do you want to?
Then, yeah, if you'd like to go back to those three-dimensional renderings, we are not settling in on colors, we are not settling in on any of the architectural materials yet. Although I did say it's very likely it would be something like LP Smart Side, and perhaps a little bit of masonry, and outdoor patios, and aluminum railings, and things like that. We'll submit a landscape plan, a lighting plan, and all those necessary features that would be necessary for any development. So, we've got a long way to go on the architectural and the site design, but I'll leave you with that, and just hope that you see that the density and what this brings from a residence and a pedestrian and a traffic vibrancy of the downtown Oregon area is a good thing. It's a positive for the downtown.
Okay. Comments, anything from staff?
Not too much to add, I just, I got a couple of questions from some folks earlier today, just wanted to clarify a few things. There was some question about just the ownership of these, the homes that are there right now, and these are all rentals, they're owned by the same landlord. So the landlord and the developer were in communication and then approached the village last fall with this concept. And then again, you saw this in November, and then again today. So just, that was a question that I got earlier, and then there was another question about parking requirements. So our parking requirements in every other zoning district except for Central Business are one and a half parking spaces per unit. That was a change that we made in the fall of '21 for those parking updates. So, so believe in any other, you know, district, 60, typically 68 units would be kind of the minimum required for 45 units of housing. And of course, through the plan development process, developers have the ability to ask for exceptions from that, because we haven't had a lot of new developments, you know, residential developments in the downtown since Jefferson Crossing did go back and check the code. And Central Business District, which I believe, you know, should this move forward, they would probably use Central Business as the kind of underlying zoning district, because it's meant for, you know, kind of commercial uses on the first floor, multifamily can be above, it has a taller height requirement or height allowance than our multifamily, it's 35 versus 45 feet. But the downtown, given that, I mean, a lot of our businesses don't have their own dedicated off-street parking, there are no parking or landscaping requirements, but of course, it certainly behooves developers, especially with residential, to have off-site parking as an amenity for, and kind of an expectation that multifamily tenants would have. So I think it would be unlikely we would see, you know, no parking for an apartment building. The commercial space, you know, doesn't necessarily have its own parking requirements, but again, it could. But, you know, with all of the other businesses and spaces downtown, thinking about, you know, Sunny's and Senior Peppers and Peaceful Hearts, if they don't have their own dedicated, you know, parking lots for all those individual businesses. But parking is definitely a, you know, a topic of conversation downtown, I'm sure something we'll dig into with the downtown master plan. But just wanted to address those two questions in case other people had them as well. But again, this is conceptual, I agree, we're kind of at the point where, I think, we'd like to give the developers some direction in terms of, are they headed in the right direction? Is the scale and height again appropriate? And then, from there, they can kind of invest more resources into the exterior design. But hand it over to you guys.
Okay. Plan-commission. Anybody have any comments?
Of course I do.
I know you do. Disappointed.
Steve Knight, first of all, I just want to say, nice job of sort of framing the conversation, taking the architecture and the aesthetics off the table, and just sort of wanting to get an idea of sort of the footprint was a wise choice. So with that being said, I won't make any comments on it, because that will happen as it happens. Footprint-wise, I think that I'm comfortable with what you're proposing. However, I will say this, I think that it's overbuilt on what I'm going to call the northwest side. I think that there is some flexibility to sort of pull that end of the building in to allow some relief on the other side of the building between, you've got building sidewalk parking right on top of each other. You know, if you were to pull, shorten that by 10 feet even, I think that you could add some of that in between the building and the sidewalk, and then a little bit more on the buffer yard between the drive aisle and the neighbor's property. I think it's a tough sell for 2,500 square feet, this far away from parking. That's my opinion. I would not want to be a tenant that would, that would want to lease space here and have to walk that far from possibly getting parking. That's just me. You know, one thing as this moves forward, depending upon what you're looking at for tenants, if it's restaurant users, what are you going to do with mechanicals, grease hoods, blah, blah, blah? You know, how are you going to handle that stuff? I'm comfortable with sort of how close it is to the street as well, I think that that's an appropriate distance, close but not too close. I do think that it is taller than anything else that we've got in the downtown. You know, the downtown is, eh, three stories, let's say. We're looking at four. I think that there is potential for maybe part of this to be four, but I certainly think that it's not being sympathetic to sort of what's going around it. I think that maybe along the street and maybe along that southern edge, if those, those areas could be stepped down to three stories, or maybe you can do a loft space to sort of cheat some of that with those units. There's, there's opportunity there to sort of help create some interest in the building, step it down to what the scale might be more appropriate, and still try to meet some of those needs that are needed for you to cash flow, simply. That's where I'm at on the building footprint and stuff like that.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I agree, I think the four stories on the, call it the left side of the page there is okay. I don't, I'm not concerned about that as much. I think if we could step it back down as it goes to the right, to the south, I think that would help a lot of perceptions. But I know there's massing required to get the unit count there, I think underground parking would have helped a lot.
Okay. Same thing. I, I get, you know. He had a very good comment about this, John did, about. The stepping down or whatever, whether or not that's even concealable again with the cash flow issue. Yes, I, my biggest concern obviously is your neighbor, you know, and they've got a nice house there and it's just what, what can be done? To mitigate the, uh, enormity of something next door. You know, you can't put up a big barrier, obviously, but. He's an architect, I'm not, so you guys, you guys talk to each other about this.
You know, the catch-22 is that you're a pioneer. You're, you're kind of creating. A, a new building that sort of bookends this side of our downtown area. And, you know, you want to sort of match what's going on in the other parts of the downtown. But you've got single-family residences adjacent to you. That side of the development hasn't caught up to sort of what you're proposing, if that makes sense. So, um, you're, like I said, you're kind of being a pioneer out here with putting in this size building. And we'll probably be gone before everything catches up to it. So. So to that point, I think that we need to be a little bit more empathetic to what's going on around here.
Again, you're just looking at, at occupancy, the number, number of units, et cetera, et cetera, that, you know, without. We're getting hung up a little bit on the structure, but, um, but it's obviously a big, big part of what's going to have to be considered. Before you go too far into the architecture. You have any problem with the, with the size of the, I don't have necessarily a problem with the, the density and the, uh, number of units.
No.
Is that, I'm sorry, you.
I just think the commercial space is going to sit. That's a, that's a big space. Twenty-five hundred square feet is a tough nut. It's not the normal size for what I'm seeing for commercial tenant spaces. It's a tough location. It's a long way to trash. It's a long way to parking. You know.
I don't, well, I'm trying to look at the actual size of the parcel of property. Back would be the northeast side. What's, what's all in there? Is that part of the parcel? Or not? You know what I mean by the northeast side? Top right.
The lines are on the drawing.
I'm looking on the drawing if I can tell it on here.
Was it on that information block?
Well, it's on here possibly, right here.
What sheet do you want first?
I'm, uh, boy.
Sixty-eight thousand, two-hundred-and-eight square feet. That's, is that the building?
That's the building square footage.
Where the property lines are.
That's the property lines? That's what I'm looking for right there. Okay, it is the property lines.
And they're shown on the next sheet. It's just a little dark.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. Right there it is. Yeah, six, I got it. So you are, that's the confines.
I'm not concerned about stormwater. It seems like you've got enough property. It depends on if the ground is going to allow for infiltration.
Right.
You know.
You know, we haven't, we haven't gotten down the path of, of engineering the stormwater yet.
I get it.
Obviously, there's, there's tank systems under the, you know, which cost money and, and so we'll have to. Explore that with our engineers as well, but.
Where I'm at is, on this is I'm not overly opposed to the, the project as. Obviously, the building that you're showing is, is it just a block? It's nothing. The architecture is not a part of the discussion this evening. I wouldn't have a problem with the number of units. My concern is what can you do to mitigate? The exposure of the neighbor. That's the biggest concern I have because you are right against the residential unit. And it's a nice little house.
So what I'm hearing is, is transition the height a little bit better than what we're doing right now.
Well, again, all you're doing is showing a block. I mean, we get that. We understand that. There's no, you don't, you know, you're not going to put a lot of money and time into architecture. Until you have an idea that we can, yes, agree that.
And that's part of it, right? I mean, we wanted to make sure that we weren't marching down a path that, that. Plan Commission wouldn't support, uh, in terms of density and, and parking and, and really submitting for. The PUD and, and going, taking that next step to integrate all of our engineering and our architectural design. So. You know, if we can. Get some positive feedback and, and I, I think what I'm hearing is positive as long as we can solve a few of these challenges. We'll try to find a way to, to make everybody happy on the architecture as well.
I think that this single-loaded parking is the best solution to try to mitigate some of those. Concerns about, um, headlights and all that sort of stuff. The headlights point to the building. They don't point to the neighbor. So I think that that was the right choice. Put the double-loaded on the backside where you have fewer people to be concerned about. Yeah, it's just the height, size, scale.
Is this, is, is, is having a, a commercial space. Necessary for this project?
Necessary, I'd have to defer to, to the owners. I, I don't know if I can comment on that. I know that's always been a goal of our. You know, since day one, we've always wanted to integrate some commercial space. Because of its proximity to downtown and, and we thought the mixed-use component would be a nice feature, whether it's. You know, I think we started out with something like five or six thousand square feet and that didn't seem real, uh, feasible. So we're at twenty-five hundred right now, but. Is that the right quantity? I, you know.
Yeah, I don't know. And I'm not an expert in that field to look at, at, at what would be good there. How many square feet or. Or what kind of tenants or anything that's, that, that has to do with that area. But it's, it's something to look at also. Again, it's only, it's only twenty-five hundred square feet. That doesn't do much the rest of the.
Right. Is it two twelve-hundred square foot tenants or is it a twenty, you know, it, it is sort of a. Middle ground, right? There's, there's, there's not a lot of tenants in that twenty-five hundred square foot range.
And I'm not too concerned about the parking aspect from that standpoint. Because when people are leaving is when the businesses will be open. And when people are coming back is when the businesses will be typically closing down. So you're kind of getting a double use of those parking stalls. So assuming it's, it's not somebody that runs into the late evenings. So generally speaking, uh, parking should work out in your favor.
Yeah, I think I would prefer to max out the commercial space as much as possible. But, uh, and I, I like the, uh, the proposal in terms of the intent and all, and I think that. We should be able to work out, it sounds like, to get things to fit together and. Getting traffic in and out of that areas will be an important part. And that was mentioned before that, uh. It's a crowded area and, and it, it may take some, some working with the village on getting. That set up so the traffic moves properly.
Am I sensing that at least from the Plan Commission members, we aren't, we aren't in opposition to this?
No.
Nope. Okay, so it's, it's, it's a, it's a progress, progress we made on it, so, um. And I, now, again, as you mentioned, I, I looked at this thing as twenty-five hundred square feet, one tenant, but when you see. And I was looking at a single sole use that may not be anywhere near fitting for this. So I'm thinking, yeah, a couple twelve-hundred foot, whatever, you know, whatever it could be, so. Which should be, you could have people walk from the parking lot, you know. So it was not a, I was looking at more of a, a food type thing and that, that wouldn't be appropriate, I don't think there. Wouldn't be functional. It's going to be a long road to, uh. To go down, I think, before you get to the final. Maybe to do a few steps to get some idea. Because you're going to have, we, you know, we eventually will get to a, a, uh, public hearing on, on rezoning and. Et cetera, et cetera. We will have a room full of people.
See you a few more times. Thank you for your feedback.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, moving on, we're going to go to item, uh, seven B. This is for discussion only. Again, conceptual review, proposed public works facilities. Jeffrey, you got, oh, oh, okay.
Yeah, we got a couple PowerPoints here and have a familiar face in front of us. A couple you might remember Corey Horton from his days on the board, now working for Rupert Milky and. But kind of our, our, uh, our project lead on this, but I'll, um, let Corey and Lauren and Don, uh, take it away and. They are much more qualified to answer your questions, but I'm here to, um, fill in some blanks on setbacks and kind of next steps in our approval process as well.
All right. Well, thank you all for, uh, having us here to talk about these, uh, well projects. We're just getting started. Um, a lot of what we'll show you doesn't have a ton of detail on it, just like the last application. We're here to get your feedback. So with that, let me, uh, go through our presentation. It has a lot of information in it. Hopefully answers a lot of your questions, but if you have other questions, let me know. So the first project is well three. Uh, it's located at the intersection of East Netherwood and Hillcrest Drive. You can see it on the map there. Many of you are probably very familiar with driving past, uh, this building. So the, what is the project? Um, we're rehabilitating, uh, that wellhouse. It was originally constructed in nineteen sixty-seven. It was designed in nineteen sixty-six. So a lot has changed in technology and kind of requirements and regulatory, uh, things. For water facilities like this since that time. So this, um, these facilities are inspected by the DNR and we have a list of things that. Don't meet the current code for this, uh, facility. Some of those are the electrical components, um, within the, the building. The chemical rooms, uh, right now, the chemical storage is directly, it's essentially one room inside of that building. So you have chemicals in with all of the piping and with the motors and with the electrical. It's just not how you do things anymore. Power backup, uh, DNR wants redundancy. If the power goes out, you still want to be able to have water. And then finally, the, there is an overflow. There's an underground reservoir, um, that's associated with this facility and there's an overflow. We need to do some upgrades to that as well. So the current facility is a concrete, just brick exterior, uh, a very flat pitch roof. And on the top of the roof, you can see there's a hatch. That's so they can get in and maintain the well. If they have to pull the, the motor and the pumps, uh, they bring a crane in, they take that hatch off and that's how they access that.
It was John's first building. Wasn't this your first building you designed?
I just want to know if this is the pump that, uh, serves my house, this should be a priority.
It is, it is. It'll be on the precious.
Yes.
So, uh, what does the site look like? Um, many of you have probably seen it. It's kind of surrounded by residential areas. The site generally slopes towards the east. There's the greenway on the east side of the project. Uh, electric and gas, um, kind of serve from the north and northeast. And one thing to note, and I'll talk about it a little bit later, you see the, the structure above the ground. You see the brick building. There's also an underground reservoir and Jeff is kind of showing you where those dotted lines are. That's not only. Outside the building, it's under part of the building as well. So after the water gets pumped out, it goes into that reservoir and then ultimately booster pumps take it from the reservoir and pump it into the water system.
So you're not directly from the well. You're going into the, into the, uh, storage.
All of our, all of our systems work like that.
Really? I didn't, I, I hadn't been inside structures. I didn't realize that. Okay. So yeah, actually what you've got is a booster pump station. There's what that is.
There's booster pumps in there as well.
Yeah, that'd be good to do that. Yeah, we need more pressure there.
All right. You want to go to the next slide? So you, you jumped the gun on my next slide here, so.
I understand how they work.
This is just a general floor plan of what the building looks like inside currently. Um, so right now. You, on the north end, you have the electrical panel and all of the controls associated for the well system. Uh, you have the well and pump. Um, the motor sits on top of that and then the, the deep well is underneath that. So that motor and pump, pump the water up. It goes into the reservoir, which is under the facility. There's also chemical tanks there that Jeff is pointing out. Those, um, meter in, uh, chlorine and fluoride into the water, um, into the reservoir. And ultimately those booster pumps take the water from the reservoir, pump it out to the system. One other thing to note here is where the gas line comes in. I'll talk about that as well. You know, we will need gas to feed the, the generator that we're doing. And, um, the location of that, um, is, will be a critical thing that we'll talk about. One other piece on here, there is a hatch to access that reservoir. They need to get in and maintain and clean and inspect that. So there is a. A hatch that goes to the surface so people can get in there and maintain it.
That's there now?
Yes.
How many, I'm sorry, how many gallon is that reservoir?
I'm trying to remember, Jeff.
I believe fifty thousand.
I was going to say forty thousand, so it's somewhere in there.
Forty-nine thousand, three-hundred-and-eighty-two.
I don't believe you.
So is it?
Point seven.
Sorry, this is completely off the subject, kind of. That tank, is it like deep or is it at the surface or?
It's below the surface.
Yeah, it's, it's below the surface, so it's, there's grass on top of it.
Is the top of it like four feet down so it doesn't freeze or?
It won't freeze. The water's.
Yeah, no, it's, it's probably about ten feet deep, don't you think?
Yeah, it's not that, it's forty thousand's not that big.
Ten feet deep and this hatch really is only. I mean, it's not that far from the top. The hatch actually sticks up.
Yeah, it actually sticks up, uh, three or four feet, got a cover on it.
And then you, there's a.
A ladder.
Ladder on there.
We'll put you in there one of these days.
Yeah, if you want to go take a look, we'll, we'll bring you there. Ready to go, next one? Yep, please. Okay, so what's changing? As I mentioned, those chemical feed rooms, um, to meet DNR standards, we need to have those in their own dedicated rooms. Now, in addition to having them in a separate room, you put, um, ventilation in those rooms. So when, um, staff. And vendors need to enter those rooms to refill the chemicals, you're getting air turnover in there. Uh, so that addition is, is roughly eight feet further north and the building is twenty feet wide. Uh, so we're basically just bumping that building out north. As I mentioned before, we'll get, uh, new electric, uh, components. So there's an entire new electric panel there and a motor control center. We're also changing the voltage to all of the, the components, uh, to a four-eighty system instead of a two-forty. It's just a lot more efficient, uh, to run it that way. And, um, all of the well components and the booster pumps, it's all kind of getting refreshed and renewed. So things will get painted, motors will get rebuilt. You know, everything is, is gonna kind of be brought up.
Booster pumps.
The booster pumps will get pulled and kind of, you know, they'll go through the pumps and, and rebuild them and, you know. Replace bearings when needed, things like that. That's, that's the plan with those. Okay, next one. As I mentioned, we'll need to add a generator for power backup. This is just a, a schematic of, of a generator. It's, it's basically a, a metal box that sits on a, a concrete slab. As shown in this, um, figure, you know, we can do some screening around it as well to, you know, hide it from, from view a little bit. So that's one of the things that we'll want your feedback on tonight. I'm sure, uh, everyone is concerned about noise, you know, when you have a generator. I don't want to hear that thing all the time. You know, we're in a residential area. So we have selected the level two sound attenuation for the generator, which is the highest, um, sound attenuation that they, they make. So the sound level will be similar to, or below landscaping equipment from inside of a house. So if you can imagine yourself sitting in your living room and your neighbor's mowing his lawn, that's about the level of sound that you'll have coming off of the generator. The generator is, is only intended to run when we have the power go down and to make sure that that well keeps functioning. And we also need to run it basically once a month for thirty minutes just to make sure that things are moving and, and just to make sure that it's working. Okay, next slide. So the site plan, uh, bumping that, uh, those chemical feed rooms out to the north. We're still within the setbacks. This is an institutional zoning, which has a twenty-five foot front, thirty foot back. Twenty-five foot street side and a ten-foot side yard setback. So as you can see, the, the addition that we're doing there, um, meets those requirements. The generator, we're proposing to place that. Jeff, I don't know if you can point to that, where the generator's at?
Sorry. Okay. Right here.
Yep, so we're proposing to place it there. You know, ultimately, um, you know, we looked at the best location for this. Um, many times we like throwing these behind the building because they're a little bit more out of sight, out of mind. A couple of reasons why we didn't do that here. It's more difficult to get to, to maintain, um, is one piece of it. But as I mentioned before, the gas line being there, there isn't a lot of space between that gas line and the building. And we also have flood plain associated with the greenway, um, on the east side of the building. So from a, a resiliency standpoint, we wanted to have the generator on ground that's high and dry. Because when the power goes out frequently is when there's storms and when bad things are happening. So that's the reason why we put the, the generator kind of on the west side of the building. We did also look at putting it south of the, uh, driveway going to the well house. That would push it closer to the residential area, um, right next to the site. And also if we ever need to get into and maintain that underground reservoir, if they need to do any concrete work or working on the planks, it would kind of be in the way there as well. So that's how we ended up where the generator is at. Okay. So aesthetics, uh, finishes and landscaping. So that addition, uh, we're looking to do a concrete masonry unit, um, just kind of for the structural aspects of those rooms. We want something that is strong, durable and withstands, um, you know, chemicals because, um, you know, we have chlorine that we store in that, in that room. So we want something that's going to last. So, um, the, that will be made of CMU, but ultimately we're going to wrap the entire building, uh, with fiber cement siding. So it will refresh everything, look a lot newer, look a lot nicer and it will match. Obviously we can't match brick from nineteen sixty-eight. So, um, we're looking to, uh, do fiber cement siding on all of it. In addition, we're gonna kind of, uh, you know, replace doors, um, make everything new again. Um, the roof line, we're trying to maintain that same roof line, uh, because the current, uh, framing for the roof is, is in really good condition. Uh, so with that extension, we're looking into how that ties in. We may end up doing like a metal roof on top of the entire structure, but we still have not gotten to that point yet for that part of the design. Like I mentioned, we're very open to kind of the finishes and, and colors. Um, you know, the, the siding can be oriented in different directions. We can look at different materials and colors and things like that. So that, that's a piece of the feedback that I want to get from you tonight. And then landscaping and screening, you know, we, um, like the previous slide showed, you know, and you can see in this, um, elevation view that the generator, uh, there, you know, we certainly, you know, on the street side could put arborvitae's or some natural landscaping to kind of hide that component. All right, next slide. This is, uh, pretty much the same thing, except it's just the north and south elevation. So the narrower side of the building. The one on the top, we have two doors to access those chemical feed rooms. Those are new. Uh, the one on the south elevation is just the, the south entrance that's currently there. Um, like I mentioned before, we'll just be replacing the doors there. So with that, I think, uh, we're looking for your feedback and I think Lauren has dubbed my AI-generated, uh, architect here as Mr. Pensive. So, uh, we're, we're looking for your, your feedback on kind of what you think would, would fit in best, um, from that, you know, finish, coloring, aesthetics and, and landscaping for the project and also here to take any questions or concerns that you have.
So this is an unoccupied space, right? So it's, so it doesn't need to meet energy code, correct?
Uh, it will need to, the, this will need to get permits through the PSC and they do look at energy.
Where I'm going with that is, um, it, it seems odd to, to build a block building, put sleepers on it and then have to put siding over the top of it. Why not just do a split face block and leave the finishes off? And I mean, there's five or six tan colors that you can get that are close-ish to the brick and save yourself the money for, and the labor, additional labor costs.
Can I pull up, I'll pull up the street view.
This is an old look.
And it's like a cream city brick that's got a wire cut to it.
Pretty tired looking.
Oh, there we go.
You know, even if you're to get a, a gray split face and, and paint it, I don't, I don't like that because then it's a maintenance thing. But if you get a colored, colored split face, that's tan-ish.
I almost wonder if you do something that's intentionally different, like a, like a darker gray or darker brown or something. It could kind of be, I don't know. I mean, the roof line continuing, it's gonna feel a little bit odd.
I would be completely on board with that and I agree if the roof lines were continuous.
Can you do a, uh, like a brick laminate, real brick laminate on some, on brick? You know what I'm talking about?
Like a thin set brick?
Yeah, they're like F-inch thick.
Yeah. We call them lick and stick brick. It's just a, it's just a muddied, muddied back and they put it on. Sometimes it comes in panelization.
I mean, if you're trying to match everything, I, I guess the concern is, is for neighbors, wanting, wanting it to kind of look like it. We, we're sinking one point seven million into this one, I think. Is it that well?
Into that?
And I, the hope was to kind of have it.
Electrical, that's where a lot of the money is.
To have it look uniform.
Motors and everything.
All kind of same time period.
Yeah.
I, I don't like the, the cream colored brick that's, it's. It's dated, it's dated.
I guess one other thing to, um, um, the east side of the building, there is, um, you know, some windows that will need to be modified as well. I don't know if you could go to like street view.
Yeah, that's where I'm gonna head here, so.
You know, the other option is, and I'm always willing to add money to a budget. Is if you were to do it in the, if you're to do it in the gray block and, and then still do the, um, hardy plank on the addition, as long as you've got the sleepers and the hardy plank, just put it right over the brick and go the whole, and then everything is uniform.
Yeah, that's, that's what we were planning to do.
I thought that you were doing it just on the addition.
Nope, no, this was the whole thing.
I apologize. I apologize.
Yeah, it's to make it all look, oh, well, is that our pump station?
No, that's the house across the street. I don't know how they got it blurred.
Yeah. So we've got a window on this corner. That'll go away because of the new roof, but.
Oh.
Now this is.
I, I, okay, my misunderstanding there.
So it would all be.
This is also off the subject a little bit. Does that take care of Maryhill, that pump station, that booster station?
Yeah.
So it's all kind of tied into one system that said it's very likely due to its proximity that yes, a lot of the water that you're getting in Maryhill is coming out of this one.
Not concerned about it, just that, the pressure. Cause the pressure's low up in Maryhill.
It's low?
I think it is. Don't you think?
Have you ever put a gauge on your house?
You're not gonna answer it.
Why not?
Cause I took the water regulators out of my shower.
Oh, I see.
Have you, have you ever put a pressure gauge on your house? Cause that well maintains around sixty-five.
It does?
Yes.
Okay, well, sixty-five.
So a lot of times if you, let's say, don't have a water softener, your faucets will, aerators will plug up and reduce your pressure significantly. You'll notice it, right? I get calls on that all the time and we'll go clean the aerators for the homeowners.
Oh, they'll all air it out, look, yeah.
They'll improve right away, so.
Pretty.
By the way, this is Don Gray, our, our water utility manager. Oh, it's there too.
He's got a name tag.
That's right.
You know, my, my, the only thing I want to say about this well is, is, um, the history I know about it, I believe it was originally drilled in forty-seven. It was drilled like four hundred and seventy feet. We had a really cool board. I wish I could have found it to bring it tonight.
Okay.
It's here somewhere. It's at the well or at.
It's either at well or in your office.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They actually showed maturely they went through when they drilled it.
Sure.
It's really cool. Um, but I personally think the water quality of that well is the best. The nitrates are the lowest. We just did nitrate tests and the, the nitrates are extremely low there. So I think the quality of the water there is, is really good.
I didn't realize, I thought we were running off towers and I didn't realize we actually had booster stations.
Well, it's, it's, so technically we are, our pressure is gauged off the towers.
It is.
Yeah, so it, and basically what happens is, is when the towers reach a certain level, it calls them pumps and pumps kick on, fills the tower up to the appropriate level.
Yeah, okay.
And then shut off. Yeah.
Okay, cause you got stand pipe out in Pittsburgh, yeah.
Yeah, you ride off of the tower at the sledding hill and the one up near the prison.
Right.
Office, off a C or M. M.
Yeah, those two stand pipes, uh, basically is our regular pressure zone. And then anything is you're heading west, the Lincoln Road Tower covers primarily the Bergamot Augusta Drive.
All right.
That's a higher pressure zone because that tower's elevated.
Yeah.
You couldn't tie it into the other two stand pipes because it's considerably taller.
It would give us too much pressure down here.
It'd give you about a hundred twenty or a hundred fifty.
That'd be nice.
You don't even mean soap at that kind of pressure.
Yes.
Well, you was.
All right. It just, I, I.
Yeah.
I understand this stuff. That's why I'm just, I used to work with this.
So I apologize. I didn't understand that we were wrapping the entire building. I thought it was just putting it on the addition.
Yeah, let me, let me go to that here.
So have fun. Uh, landscaping, uh, I, I think that it would be good to have, um, around the, uh, generator on the street sides, the two street sides. Um, but I don't think that, um, yeah, I'm not too worried about the sound. I'm not too worried about that.
Yeah.
I think it'd be nice if we could have something more than just arborvitae around the generator on the, like, make it a little bit less institutional would be a nice feature. If we're gonna spend one point seven million.
Yeah, we'd like to plant.
Two and put some trees up or something.
We'd like to plant some trees out there. Um, we try to get away from a lot of shrubs and bushes and stuff because those need a lot more maintenance. I.e. the frontier building.
Yeah.
We're trying to get away from that kind of look. Um, but yeah, arborvitae are, they're nice. We used to, I don't know if you remember, and, uh, when TDS wanted to come in and do that, switching station in Stone Ridge Park and, uh, we had them, I think you, we had them put arborvitae around there and it's been a nice sound barrier and they, they just look good all year round.
They do. I, I, the only concern I have with that stuff is, again, I don't like to see it completely. So you can't see it from the street or somebody's for, 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 uh, security purposes. People messing with it or something.
Oh, people, yeah.
You have a, you know, those things are self-contained. They really, and the, and the box itself is locked or the, the generator's locked. You can't get into it, but.
Well, it does not, arborvitae are intended to be, you know, they can get seven, ten, twelve feet tall. We don't need anything that tall.
No.
You know, so find a shrubbery that is not.
That's a, that's an ever, or a, what are you, evergreen, whatever you want to call them, a conifer? What, no.
Yeah.
Maybe like boxwood or something that doesn't grow quite so high.
Yeah, you know, something that has some interest during the winter. Um, you know, flowering crabs are great. They, they grow like weeds in this area.
They don't grow very tall.
Winter jasmine.
Winter jasmine.
Yeah, the yellow flowers.
Nice.
Okay, we beat this up enough?
Yep.
Oh, and I guess too, any feedback on colors or any other ornamentations? Like to see, I mean, I think that we looked kind of street view in the neighborhood, a lot of white houses, um, a lot of branches, but.
I would just say keep it. Don't do black and white because that's trendy and I think you'll be tired of it in four years. You know, the thing about it is, um, it's like stains in homes, you know? Five years ago, everything was super white and clear. Now it's like super black and dark. Five years from now, it's gonna be super white and clear. Um, find something that's fairly neutral and you'll be fine.
Sounds like beige to me.
beige.
Crazy or.
Blue, gray.
Yeah, some, reds and tones, I'm sorry, yeah. Okay.
What about, I, I haven't brought this up, but I wouldn't mind putting some lettering on our, you know, our well. Yeah, signage or some like, you know, well number three, uh, George Morgan Water Department or something like that. Cause we don't have that on.
Any of them.
We don't have it on five, four, uh, five's kind of out of the way, but.
Yeah. Yeah, there's no signage on them other than the address number, that's it.
Yeah.
My other presentation, there's a picture of a well that has a sign on it like that. Take a look at that.
All right, so are we?
Are we on to the next?
Yeah, we can. Yep, yep. Let me get that one up here.
Okay, well number six.
All right.
And you are.
So well number six, uh, this is a, a brand new well and this, uh, well is intended to serve new developments. It also provides a system benefit as well. This is located in the Highlands of Netherwood subdivision. It's at two seventy-nine Peterson Trail. So it's kind of a really odd shaped lot, uh, if you look at it in GIS. Um, and it's kind of also in the middle of a residential area.
Do you want to give in relation where we're right here?
Yeah, so we're north of CC, south in Netherwood, kind of on.
The church, the library.
On the east side Killer Alpine Park is there.
And, uh, what is that, uh? Hermsen Park, right here.
So this project, like I said, is a new well house, um, to provide the needed water system capacity for the village. Ultimately, this is looking out forty-five years to provide the capacity that, that the village will need for water supply. Inside of this, there's also a booster station and this is a, a booster station to elevate water pressures in areas of the village that are really high in elevation. So this takes it above the, um, you know, pressures. Jeff is kind of outlining an area in the Highlands of Netherwood that if we don't have that booster station, those lots do not have very good water pressure. And then finally, this also includes garage space for the water utility. Uh, they need a place to put, um, their trailer for water main breaks. They need a place for spare parts, pipes, things like that. Um, they're not intending on storing anything outside. Uh, that's why we want the garage space so we can kind of have a place for them to store their equipment and materials that they need when they need to respond to water main breaks and things like that. But we do recognize this as a residential area, so we want to keep the site clean and not have stuff outside. So the floor plan of, of this new well house is here. Uh, the building, uh, I want to say was ninety-two feet by thirty-five feet roughly. This is kind of all the newest technology, similar to the other well. It has an underground reservoir. Jeff is outlining there. It has a, a well that pumps and discharges into that reservoir. It has a series of booster pumps, uh, right there for getting that pressure elevation. This has a generator and it's located inside of the building on the, um, the one wall will have a louver obviously to exhaust the, the, uh, gases out from the generator when it's running. Next to that, we have three different chemical feed rooms. Uh, this, uh, well will require three of them and then we also have a restroom. And finally, we have a garage that, um, you know, we have a kind of a two bay and a one bay. The doors on that we're thinking are likely going to be twelve feet tall. Um, you know, they have a trailer that, um, they need to have some height because they have trench boxes and things like that that they need to be able to, to get in and out. Okay, next slide. So the site plan on this one, um, the zoning on this lot is rural holding, which has huge setbacks on it. So it's a thirty-five foot front yard setback, a fifty foot backyard and a fifty foot side yard. And if you look at this exhibit, the red line kind of shows you what would be usable if you stuck to those setbacks. So ultimately what we're looking to do is to request kind of more usable setbacks for the well and our target is there to have a forty foot front yard setback and a twenty foot backyard and side yard setback. One thing that isn't drawn on this, uh, plan is we need to also leave space in case we need to do a building addition for a future treatment area. If radium levels ever get high enough in the well, we need to have a place to do radium treatment. Um, we don't expect that we're going to need that, but we want to make sure that we plan for it and we're not painting ourselves into a corner with no space to put something that will be essential for the future if that happened. So yeah, Jeff's kind of outlining where that would go. It would meet those green setbacks, um, you know, and that's kind of why we've placed the building where we did. Okay? So here's, um, just some of the, uh, elevation views that we've started to work on. These again are very conceptual. Just kind of to get some. Um just kinda to get some discussion going, uh this example has a hip roof on the one side. Um kind of Jeff is showing you there, um we uh also, which right where his cursor is at right now. Will need to have some kind of a hatch for accessing the well and I'll show you some kind of unique options that we're considering for, for that hatch. The next um slide will show you kind of the other sides of the building. Um again, we're showing just a really kind of simple, you know, brick face with no windows, you know, doors. Um we have some options of some things that uh we can do to kind of dress this up. Uh because it will be in a residential area, so on some of the later slides, I'll show you some of the options of things that we could consider. We also looked at a gable roof and these roof options and kind of we're also discussing this project with the developer. Just to kind of get their feedback on the architectural style of this building because it will be intermixed with the residential properties that they're developing. So they preferred uh the hip roof over the gable roof, um which uh we're trying to be sensitive to and. Take their feedback.
I think, just quickly, I think it was the other way around, they preferred the gable roof to the hip roof.
Okay, I had that backwards.
It's just more consistent, they were saying that they aren't seeing too many hip roofs, if any, out there in that neighborhood, so this would just match a little bit better.
Good, I like simpler roofs. Alright, you can go to the next slide. So with this project being a new site, you know, I think we want to consider, you know, the possibility for some public amenities. There is a trail that goes right by uh this property, um you know, maybe we do a drinking fountain or, you know, a bike. Repair station like I've seen in other places in the village, something like that. Um aesthetically, you know, I think we, we can look at some of the roof lines, some, some different things that I'll show you in those photos that I talked about. And then again, architectural finishes, um and we're trying to, you know, get feedback. We're also, I guess, fortunate, you know, a lot of homes are getting built in this area, so we can kind of look at the surrounding neighborhood and. Kind of take the context of that to design something that's going to fit in. Alright, next slide, so here's just some examples of, of projects um that we're familiar with and that we've worked on, um you know. This is mostly intended to just kind of get some photos in front of you to, to be able to say, I like that, I don't like that. Um so this is more of a block building, obviously it has kind of a, a different color, you know, lower course and upper course. And this is more of that hip roof type, um you can go to the next slide. Um, this one I think kinda looks like a prison, but um. You know, I, I think this one, it, it has a metal roof on it, which is kind of unique, um again, you can kind of see some of those hatches and. Uh again, not a lot of um, you know, architectural flair with that, this is much more of a bare bones kind of uh a wellhouse. Alright, next slide, now we're getting into a little bit, you know, fancier, um you know, obviously, you know, brick. We have some false windows, again, there's kind of an example of, you know, a, an identification sign of, you know, what the facility is. Again, looking more residential, you know, the doors have, have kind of some inlays in them that look much more like a residential door would. And those windows are not actually windows, they're false windows, um a lot of times because of security purposes, we wanna um. And also because sometimes the chemicals etch any glass that you put in as well, um but those windows a- again are just for aesthetics. On many of these wells, we're gonna have some um, you know, functional components, like on that one, you see vents, um on the roof, we'll see hatches. We have various antennas that we need for the instrumentation and things like that, so some of those pieces, you know, we need to work into the whole context of the building as well. Alright, the next one, this is more of a kind of prairie style, um you know, much kind of different aesthetic. Again, just kind of meant to show you some of the things that are possible. Um, you know, you can, you can go absolutely crazy with these, I've seen some of the wellhouses that look. You wouldn't be able to tell it wasn't a residential house from the outside. We don't think on this project, we wanna go quite to that level, but um we do want to make sure that this fits in nicely with the surrounding neighborhood. And this is a wellhouse, I previously was the director of Public Works in Fitchburg and this is uh well number ten in Fitchburg and. I liked a lot of the things about this well, I think architecturally, it has, you know, some nice features to it, it has those false windows. Uh it has some color variation in it, um the very interesting piece, that dormer on the top of it. That's actually the hatch for accessing the well, um there's latches inside of that and you lift. When the crane comes in to work on the well, it just lifts that piece of the roof right off of there. So again, rather than it looking like a conventional hatch, it looks, you know, more like a dormer on a, on a residential home. And again, you know, there's some pieces that you see like the louvers, that's right where, you know, similarly, you know, ventilation for um, you know, generators and. Things like that go, so uh I think this one is, is a, a nice looking wellhouse and just something to consider aesthetically. So again.
He's back.
We have some time for input and uh questions for you.
Is this a block building with brick veneer then, so four and eight kind of thing?
Yeah, so this would be a, a C M U block building with, with brick veneer.
You can do a lot with masonry veneers, um soldier courses.
Yes.
You know, I, I, I think they're putting a soldier course on the bottom of a building, popping it off a half of an inch. Costs you nothing because the brick is there and he doesn't care if he's gonna set the brick vertically or horizontally. And you don't need to change your foundation, if you pull it off a half an inch and it still creates a shadow line. So soldier course on the bottom, pull it out a half an inch, do a couple of accent bands atop the windows or pick a, a nice logical location. Um if you wanna put it in it, um top of door, top of overhead door kind of thing. Um pull them out a half of an inch, again, it creates a, a little bit of a shadow line, costs you nothing.
We actually got that exact feedback from, from the developer, they, they said. A sh- a soldier course, you know, down lower on the building, again, just to kind of give it that texture.
Yeah, as far as fake windows, never, personally, this is me personally, never been a fan of that, it's creepy to me. So if I'm gonna put a window in, I want a window, um but I, I get why they do it. The one in Fitchburg was pretty, but I think that it was um far more than what we need, you know. I'm trying to sort of make a building look nice, make it fit in. But not be um, not be another. One point seven to two point seven million dollars kind of thing.
If we're gonna put twelve foot garage doors on there, it's not gonna look like a house.
Right.
So.
She's squint, it, you, you, it's gonna cost more than that.
Yep, you picked up on that, uh yes, it is, it's, I think we're budgeting right now somewhere around. Two and a half to two point nine million was the last number I saw. Um, funding for that, a lot of that comes from different sources, so it's not all rate payer funded, but, but yeah. It's gonna be a pricey project.
Mostly from the Maryhill area.
Uh huh, of course.
You know, as, as far as um, um I like the standing seam, I think that it creates a nice visual contrast, but. Again, it's a price point kind of thing, um I like the gable far more than the hip and gable combination, it seemed uncomfortable to me.
Yeah.
You know, if you're gonna do a hip, do it on both sides or all the way around or whatever.
You like the hip, you said?
I don't like that combination hip and gable, just do a gable gable. It's Thanksgiving.
I'm losing control.
So I, 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 I don't hate to be contrarian, John, and I understand that. Creepiness factor of these fake windows, but I mean, how, how bad is that, I mean, I think they add a lot, but, I mean, I've never seen. Or noticed them, so I don't know, are they really that bad or?
Um, you mean aesthetically?
Yeah.
Um aesthetically, no, no, they're, they're not, it's just that um. You always sort of expect there to be a window and be able to sort of.
Like a reflector.
Activity or have some benefit on the inside for daylight, you know, like that one right there that's up there, those are actual windows. They're daylight, but there, it's a safety issue, so you don't have to worry about it because nobody's gonna get in those unless they got a really tall ladder. But the rest of them are.
With the height of the building, you should be able to come along with, even if it were one by four or a one by five.
Like a transom window.
If you can put something like that in.
Yeah, like above a.
Just like a, something that looks like a residential window.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
Down, I, that's me, like I said.
Well, you're different.
I am.
Gobble, gobble.
So yeah, I, I don't have a problem with the, I don't know why it looks, okay, the fake window, but I understand what the building's for, so.
Yeah.
It wouldn't bother me.
Maybe if we had a nice sign out front, that would.
That would be, yeah, I like the idea of having at least some sign, again, letting people know what it is, not everybody knows what these buildings are, like, you know.
Yeah, we do, I, I don't know if we have, I don't know if we have a picture of well five, but we have a large window. At well five.
Okay, I'll go there real quick.
Actual window?
Yeah, and. It's etched so bad from the fluoride.
Oh, yeah.
That it's, you can see out of it and you can see in it, but I'm not gonna, it's foggy. Yeah, the fluoride just etches that glass and you can't get it off once it's on.
Yeah, I wouldn't want real windows unless they're really high or something, but.
But I was wondering about block, I don't. I don't know if block would.
Glass block?
I, I mean, I assume it would, it's glass, but.
Oh, the glass block, yeah.
Yeah, there's a window there.
Is that your window done?
Yep.
Okay.
Looks etched.
I tried cleaning it multiple times, I give it up.
What do you think about the aesthetics of that?
That looks nice.
Looks like a, looks like a ranch house.
I liked it a lot.
Let me go see if I can.
Yeah.
Oops.
Where is it?
There, you can't even see it's end of the union on the.
So it's on the dead end on Union Road.
Yeah, this is.
Yep.
Uh here, I'll, I'll go back up, here, it's a, right here is the town hall. Oregon Town Hall and Union Road Storage, whoops, and then this is the, like that big Super Bowl.
Yeah.
Mowed area, so it's down here. Huh?
Down by Gwen's.
Down by Gwen's, yeah, Gwen's house is down here.
That's a nice looking building.
Yeah, it is. If I could comment on the setbacks a little bit, um I did some research this afternoon and um. Let's see, where am I wanting to go here, I wanna go to that in our just. So, this part of what I, I, uh part of what, oops, let's see what can move stuff around, um the zoning on this. I might have moved your slide there, um the zoning on this, I don't know if you remember, you know, uh Highlands and Other was a really unusual. Front yard setback because they were doing this cove, coving or co, I think it was coving is what they called it. Where they brought back minimum, I think thirty foot setback, but in some places, it's actually forty-five or fifty feet as they come to a corner. Of a junction of two roads, do you remember?
I guess I remember.
That.
Yeah, the sidewalk kinda.
Sidewalk meanders, we have bigger.
The terrace with kind of varies more of kind of like a, a wave or curve type.
Um.
So yeah, some, some have a wider terrace than others.
Right, so I did look at the um setbacks for, you know, to see if there was something really significant forcing these. Adjacent homes farther back and at this location, there isn't, so reality. This house here will have a thirty foot setback, this house here will have a thirty foot setback. The other thing with this, and this was probab, this was an oversight on our part when this was platted and zoned. Um this is always intended to be the wellsite, um we originally had another wellsite that's actually down. Kinda near Highlands and Netherwood Park, almost to Netherwood Road, um we had a, a site that we had purchased before the developer purchased this property. And um. That's where we're gonna have the well, when it looked like the developer wanted to kind of talk about a swap, they agreed to give us land in the. Development for the wellsite, um and we incorporated it into this really weird shaped lot. Um because it is part of the uh trail system that goes north through south through the entire uh subdivision. Okay, it goes through the little cul-de-sac islands and, and all that type of stuff, so you know, there is intended to be a good pedestrian access through this. So part of this site plan.
Yeah.
Um, I wonder if I can, oh, where should I go?
With the plat?
Yeah, let me pull up the plat here, actually, I'll let you pull it.
Okay.
So, large pedestrian area from north to south, so this will have a. I think it's a ten foot, it's either a ten foot wide or a twelve foot wide asphalt path, that'll be on the west side of the station. So, and then grass everywhere else, um the setbacks on these parcels, the, the. House setbacks, I think are six foot side yard setbacks, so on, on the plat, uh as you pull up. Yeah, that'll work. Six foot side yard setback, twenty foot rear yard setback, actually zoom in on. Yeah, so here's our lot, right there, lot five, um really weird, but so you can start to see the, the path. Um that is goes through there, goes through there, goes through there, goes down through there and into Highlands and Otherwood Park. Um, it's not like a total uninterrupted path, but that was the thought, to be able to get people north and south through this. So that's kind of, and then when they did a replat, this is showing the replat when they wanted um to kind of shrink a few lots. And everything, um they did everything to that except for our lot and it did mess with this little, I think it kind of messed with. Where the old line used to be and then you can see this is the new line of the plat, but really, it's just a path, it goes, there's already path here. Goes here, here and through.
Yeah.
Um, and then this, I wanna show you just the, so here's the rear yard, twenty, side yard six. And, and minimum front st- stripe, minimum front setback of thirty feet, but I wanna show you the setbacks as we go into where we are. Here we go. So you can see, this is a minimum thirty, thirty, you see, this is thirty. Um but then when it gets, some of these get way back there and, and like at this corner, so the idea was. Shrink your side yard setbacks, you have your real curvy roads, but then at the corners, it's supposed to open up. That was the philosophy, that's what they sold us and you and everybody, it looks nice, it's, uh but um.
Yeah.
So as far as like, and, and you're gonna talk about the zoning probably in your.
Yeah, I mean, I did in the memo, but just again, it's, I think because of the trail, this ended up in the rural holding the park.
Right.
Um zoning district and as I mentioned, really typically in parks, the only buildings, we might see that we're having to worry about setbacks, so it would be like. Right, J C Park, you know, the concession stand or um, you know, a pavilion or something like that. They're typically larger parcels with buildings, like I'm kind of more in the middle, more of an institutional type use, so. Um, in a way, almost having the building set even as far back as you are gonna have, it's gonna like kind of interrupt that rhythm of the. The um, the homes, but I mean, it's okay, it's a different use, but, and the parcel having some green space, Lauren and I kind of talked a little bit about. Um landscaping options here and trying to make it feel a little bit less out of place in the neighborhood.
Yeah.
One, sorry, one piece of context too, especially if we're talking about the front yard setback. Um that ironically might look out of place because it is so deep. The well itself has already been drilled, so a big part of how this is laid out in space. Is very contingent on essentially rotating a building around that well, so the front yard is one that we. We can't actually move much, if at all, forward, we are also trying to maintain that space for that future filter area. That too is kind of a blank space that may someday not be a blank space, so that's kind of where that came from.
Just wanted to, Lauren, I just gotta give you a shout out since she stopped around in the snow the other week to, to provide some pictures of the. These are some of, yeah, bullets replies winning uh, actually out here, so yeah, next, next one. Yeah, next agenda, I know, there you go, um but I know that had some pictures, just when you were talking about the well being drilled, had some cool pictures of when that was drilled. A year or two ago, was it last year?
It was the end of twenty twenty-two.
Yeah.
Okay, so if you scroll down, Jeff, there are the spring pictures, there it is.
Nine, nine hundred some feet, I think.
Oh my.
Yeah, it's between nine and a thousand.
It was really hard when we were determining um where to drill that well, we, we knew that it was, I, I mean, there were some conceptual layouts. And it is kind of throwing a dart, but uh it works great where it is, I mean, it's, but it does, does fix us to a little bit of where we are. But we never did envision that the.
I mean, it's, but it does, does fix us to a little bit of where we are, but we never did envision that the rural holding setbacks never would have been part of that. In fact, I was, that's why I was looking at the packet today to see, hoping that, or looking at the plat today, hoping to see that there were some setbacks on here and. It didn't, although this does say, I'll let five, if you go in the original plat, is dedicated to the village for open space and utility and a well. So definitely, I mean, it's always intended to be a well and well facility, so.
And the trail.
If we have to put the addition, everything that you presented makes sense to me, I get it. If we have to put the addition on for radium, does, and I don't know if anybody can answer this, is there stuff in that addition that would cause problems with windows? Because what I'm, what I'm getting at is, keep it simple for this one. And as you put the addition on, because its face will be at the same level as what the houses adjacent to it, put windows on it then. And then it looks more like stuff that's next to it.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea and I, I think that, that. Kind of makes sense for the short term and then the long term too, you'd have a plan for it if that addition did go on.
You'll have to do something with the roof lines and everything anyways, so.
Yeah.
It's gonna be a pretty big remodel, I think.
Yeah. And as far as you had asked about drinking fountains and bike repair stations, I guess I look at it as a laundry list. If, if the budget allows, if it comes in under budget and you can put a drinking fountain in. If you can put a bike repair station in, if you can put gold toilets in. You know, I mean, just do it that way.
We do have a bathroom out there.
Not a public one though.
Not a public bathroom.
What's been popular? Kids will have a little more green space.
Yeah, I was just thinking, play baseball in front of Harrison.
Yeah.
It's gonna be.
Like a little private park.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We are definitely interested, like Elise mentioned, in landscaping ideas. I mean, as far as we look at it with the budget, trees and plants are pretty cheap when you're talking about a site like this. And so if we can put in kind of an area that's shaded or will eventually be shaded for picnicking and that kind of thing, that's something that we'd be interested in doing it. We want it to look like a nice site.
There'll be a driveway right to the garage, so that space will be paved. I don't know if that's on there.
I'm surprised, oh yeah, here just.
Oh, okay.
It, it has to be.
Oh, it's a curve, okay, got it.
Because someday that pump will be pulled, you have to have a crane truck to be able to get up the outdoors.
Yeah, just to see it with all the other wavy lines there.
So would this, would this, uh, grassy area be mowed, Jeff?
Yeah.
Hello.
Regular.
Full of dental, full of dent.
Sorry, couldn't. Our water staff actually mow the, the, all the, the other areas around.
Are you gonna seat it with dental lines right away or just wait for a while?
You're gonna what?
Seat it with dental lines or you're just gonna wait for a while?
We let those come in naturally.
I see, okay.
They're all from Maryhill.
You know, as far as landscaping. And I, I don't mean to make the, the joke of this. Prairie grass is something that you could easily do like on the backside and I'm gonna call it the right hand side. That, uh, keep it ten feet away from the building or so that you can have a cut zone. But then just do prairie grass, it, it really is a nice amenity to have, allows for infiltration. In my opinion, it looks good. And then just leave the rest of it as a mowed surface or something like that.
This really drops off back here, as you can see.
So it would be.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, you know, we've got one, two, three, four, almost five feet from the corner here across, what, thirty feet sorts of.
So you wouldn't want to really mow it anyways.
I wouldn't, but I don't know.
With the push mower.
I, I agree, and, and yeah, that's definitely.
Summer help.
I think some, uh, foundation planting on the north side, especially if it's just kind of that long stretch and whether or not it has fake windows or not, but I think. Some whatevers, again, easy, maybe just buy a lot of boxwoods and use them on both decks or something, but something that'll break up that span there a little bit.
Yeah, we can maintain them, as long as it's not too crazy.
Nothing too high maintenance, yeah.
Japanese use daylilies, prairie grasses, again, being used as ornamental things.
Dogwood.
Dogwoods, barberries. They're all hardy in this area.
Ash.
Yeah. Future four, I fire with you. Okay, we got pretty well done with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
It should also, also be commented, just, this has not been built out up here yet. So, so this will be kind of a, are we kind of, are we running a kind of a dirt, there'll be a dirt road up there for a while, kind of a gravel, gravel road.
Oh, so you haven't even done that.
Cause that's, that's phase.
Yeah, I should go back to that plat here.
Phase four or five, depending on where it fell in the replat.
Right now, they're finished, I think, up to here. And, and I think the phase that they're going to bring in next is probably Denmark Circle, I think kind of this area back here. And go as ba, far back as they can before they get into the, what would be the new high pressure zone.
When will it be, this summer?
Yeah.
It's intended to start construction probably this fall, leading into next spring and hopefully opening in the summer.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks, Corey.
Yeah, thank you all for your.
Nice to see you.
Gonna move on then to the Director of Community Development report.
So. Yep, um, so yeah, just a couple dates to save, um, our upcoming meeting dates, usual first Thursday. The Senior Center Community Input Sessions are gonna be underway later this month, so. This poster said patrons, now it's Senior Center users, because that was confusing to a few folks, so. Anyone who's currently using the Senior Center and, and really anyone who's, you know, if that date works better for you, you're welcome to attend, but Friday, February twenty-third will be that session and then two, open to the public, a Thursday evening. And then a Saturday morning, um, so those will be in-person events, and again, you can see there if there's any. If you're not able to attend or don't feel comfortable attending in person, you can reach out to Rachel and we'll have kind of a paper. Version of the, the input session, but it's very hands-on. We did a, a trial run with our Council on Aging a couple weeks ago and got a lot of good feedback, made some adjustments, so. But this is again, on the new Senior Center kind of planning process, so we'll have these public sessions, then we'll have a online and paper survey focused on the community gym aspect of that building. And then kind of summarize that in a report hopefully by Memorial Day or so, before we move into design, depending on the direction the Village Board wants to go. I just wanted to make you all aware of those and if you want to help us spread the word or could print out some posters, if you want to, you know, hang them up anywhere that you frequent, that would be great, we'd appreciate. Get help getting the word out. And, um, other thing to mention, we have our downtown master plan, RFP still out, it closes next Tuesday, the sixth. Got quite a few questions and got the responses posted last week, so thank you, John, for stepping up and Phil too, to be on that selection committee, so. We'll probably by the March meeting, um, probably have at least a, something to be able to share on. How many we got, who we interviewed, and if we have kind of a recommended direction yet, we'll, we'll run those all through you all on the board as well, so. But exciting times. And I don't know if there's any other project updates we wanted to share.
We just opened bids Tuesday for J C Park Phase Two and, uh, we're happy with them.
Yeah, good.
Which is first opening like that, where we're like not trying to figure out why it was three X and four X of what we thought it was, but still not cheap, but. It'll be good, so we hope to award that on February nineteenth. And that'll start construction, uh, this, this, uh, spring slash summer. Autumn Ridge Phase Three is still scheduled to begin construction. They were hoping to do start last fall, but, uh, it's just. Yeah, they're just working on, you know how timeframes go like that and stuff, but that's really about the only, uh, major thing, and we, and just talking about how Highlands of Netherwood is looking at coming in with a, a Phase Three sometime soon. So that's where we see the growth. Most of those lots are still being built by Lennar, I think, the Lennar Homes. And as you know, Greenview Preserve, the Veridian, kind of moving full steam ahead up there.
They are, they are, there's.
Six.
We expect.
I think.
You got buildings up, yeah, they've.
Yeah, we expect building permits to continue very, very strong and, um, things remain healthy. Any questions on anything that's going on in the village or?
I enjoy driving down Janesville Street.
Oh, isn't it nice?
It is nice.
Thank Lauren and Don, actually, thank Lauren and Don, that's a huge. You spent a lot of, both you guys spent a lot of time out there. Um, this summer and, uh, that and Elm and, or, uh, State and Washington. Yeah.
So this year is sort of the chip seal and next year is the construction again kind of ish?
No, this, this year, what, you want to talk about South Main?
Yeah, so this year we are doing, um, kind of both a maintenance project, probably down near Rome Corners, uh, that stretch of Perry Parkway there. And then in that same general area, we're doing a full reconstruction with utility work on South Main Street from State all the way down to Perry, so a lot of cleanup. In that general vicinity that needed to be done, there won't be any more holes to nowhere in the middle of the street, hopefully, so.
All right.
And sidewalk along.
Yep.
Both sides of South Main Street, that's huge, and trees.
Okay. My commission dates, yeah, March second, April fourth. Okay. Senior study, we talked about that, plan staff meeting that was passed, nothing for future, do we need a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Have a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, as we are adjourned, thank you very much. Leave it to the village. Jeffrey. Hey, Jeff, leave it to the staff, to the village and make the meeting as long.